Well, we're going to start right on time. My name's Teresa Whipple. I'm the publisher of Linwood Today and I would like to welcome all of you to our General Elections City Council Candidate Forum for the city of Linwood. We are being cosponsored by the Linwood Chamber of Commerce and Community Transit. And there's actually a representative, Jamyang Dorji, who's here to just say a few words. We really appreciate their support, so please come up if you could.
Thank you, Teresa. Good evening. We're all here to hear the candidates speak, so I'll make this really brief. I want to thank all of you, welcome and thank all of you for coming. And thank you particularly to the Linwood Chamber of Commerce and My Linwood News for giving Community Transit us an opportunity to sponsor this event. The Linwood Chamber of Commerce does a wonderful job of connecting the community here in terms of providing services, whether it's connecting all of us with services, organizations, businesses, and the various resources of the city of Linwood. And My Linwood News for informing all of us. So again, thank you and hope you all enjoy and good luck to all the candidates.
Thank you very much. I wasn't planning on moderating tonight. Linda Jones, the CEO of the Linwood Chamber, had done it last time and done a fine job, but she doesn't have a voice tonight. So she called me this morning and asked if I could fill in, so here I am. I also wanted to thank the Community Life Center and Kent Landrum for hosting us in this beautiful facility and videotaping the event, so those who couldn't come tonight can watch it later. So thank you so much for your support, Kent. And just some ground rules, please make sure your cellphones are turned off. If you need the restrooms, they're out the door and to the left. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, one minute for a closing, one minute to answer questions, and one minute for a closing statement. We've, the Linwood Chamber and Linwood Today have worked together to prepare the questions, but we've also gotten several from you as you've walked in. And my goal is to try to get to as many of the general questions as we can, and I've combined a few that are very similar, if not identical, so we use our time wisely tonight because we want to get you out to the rest of your life tonight. We will start in alphabetical order for each group of candidates and then alternate between the candidates after that. So with the exception of position four, Jim Smith, who, whose opponent is not here tonight, we will alternate between the two. But Jim can't alternate with himself, at least I don't think he can. So we'll just have him, we'll just have him doing his, his own. So Jim, would you please start us with an opening statement? You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. I have to say that I'm overwhelmed by the support that our team has had during this, this election or the primary. I want to thank all the Linwood residents that have supported our campaign through their vote. I'm also humbled to be endorsed by three of the candidates that were in our primary race for position number four. I want to thank Nas and Deo and James. They have already endorsed our campaign for the, the general election. These candidates have shown a spirit of involvement that is to be commended. And thank you to the Linwood Today and the Linwood Chamber for putting this candidate forum on. But before I go, I also wanted to thank my wife, who is here tonight. She's been my rock going through this campaign. Also, on a side note, just to mention, we just got back from, I kind of have to brag, we just got back from Denver seeing our little grandkids, one and a half years old and three and a half years old, and of course, my, my daughter and her, and her husband. In addition to all the other responsibilities of being a city council member, my focus from day one will be develop a plan to back off some of the, the Linwood taxes and fees. I know that it, that throughout the years have been, sometimes have been necessary, but we have, come to the point where we can and should be reevaluating those. I needed, in a very important point when I'm out there campaigning, talking to people, is the homeless issue and the drug use. But there are solutions and we need to be working on those. We'll be working on those together. And mitigating our potential traffic problems that we can have that's coming through Linwood. Those are issues that we, that we continue with. It takes time, effort, and commitment to really know and understand the heart, the culture of a community. I have constantly been a leader in many organizations in our community over, over four and a half decades. And I'm proud to you having a positive record of achievement in our community. I'm committed to being a common sense council member, but more importantly, I'm able to work collaboratively with other members of the council as well as our mayor of the city of Linwood. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go on to position five, and we will start with Julieta Altamirano Crosby.
Buenas noches. My name is Julieta Altamirano Crosby. I am a resident of Linwood, Washington, and I am running for city council position five. Building relationships and finding regional solutions are some of my greatest strengths. I am running for city council because the challenge facing Linwood cannot be solved by its city by itself. We need regional support and working relationships with county, state, and neighboring cities. I have built successful relationships on all levels through my work as a researcher and a community advocate. I work in Snohomish County with law enforcement to reduce youth crime and build a safe environment. Currently, I serve on the Washington State Educational Opportunity Gap Oversight and Accountability Committee, the Washington State Commission on Hispanic Affairs, the Humanities Washington Board of Trustees, and the Hen-OT Project. I have a doctoral degree in social communication science, a master of education and educational leadership, CRL Pacific University, a master of communication science, and a certificate in race, equity, and leaderships in schools from Harvard University. Now, I want to use my academic and professional skills to keep Linwood a thriving community. The future of Linwood points towards one thing: growth. Preparing for change is my field of expertise as a researcher. I know how to listen and understand people's concerns, which allows me to put together a plan that considers everyone's concerns. I have long track record of leading successful collaborations between community members and a local government. I am not afraid to develop a bold and decisive plan to make a city of Linwood a place for families, to raise their children, and a place where business can grow and prosper. I will be honored if you choose me to serve you. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll have David Shirley, candidate for position five.
My name is Dr. David Shirley. I practiced in the city of Seattle for 17 years in private practice. I saw the changes going on in Linwood and decided that I would get involved. I think the changes here are going to be dramatic, probably as big as since the town was established in the 1960s, when it went from being an agricultural community to more of a bedroom community with all the building that went on. The more I've gotten involved in this campaign, the more I realize that there are big issues facing Linwood. We have spent more money every year, and we've raised tax commensurate. That has to stop. Our growth is going to be about 15,000 people, it's estimated, and we have to have a plan for that. There are many plans floating around, but in talking with the people, they would like to see a place, a Linwood center, someplace that's attractive for all of us and actually our neighbors to come to, something with vision. And also, we have needles in our park and people living in our parks and our, and some of our open spaces. These problems, it's threefold problems of both mental health, people with true homeless issues, and people with addiction problems. We need to face those problems and in a constructive manner and make some wise decisions so that we can make the changes necessary. Thank you very much. I appreciate your vote this coming November.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to position six, and we will start with Nick Coelho.
It's a pleasure to be here at a forum hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. I am seeing quite a few new faces here, so let me formally introduce myself. I am Nick Coelho, and I'm a small business owner here in Linwood. Entrepreneurship has been part of my life as far as I can honestly remember. I got my first job when I was nine years old, picking up broken bottles in the parking lot of a neighborhood seafood grill back in Little Rock, Arkansas, which sounds a little weird saying that now, but back then it felt like an honest, blue collar job, cleaning up my community and making five bucks a week. I was pretty proud. As I got older, I began helping my mother and our bakery ran out of our house. If you can imagine your kitchen with five ovens in the front, two ovens in the back porch, and a five-foot tall mixer, you might get an idea of how we help provide homestyle bread to locals, grocery stores, and restaurants all over our capital. We even still have a letter from Hillary Clinton thanking us for providing her and Bill bread in the governor's mansion back in the day. And while I grew up down south, I've spent my entire adult life here, finding myself somehow still in this whole small business game. In Seattle, I was on the ground floor of one of Seattle's craft beer and community meccas before moving to this town and spending over half a decade successfully growing my Linwood Original, the around-the-table board gaming pub. I will bring the entrepreneurial experience and small business perspective that I have to the council. And as I hope you will see tonight, I believe it is one that will benefit this city and its policymaking in a big way. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is George Hurst.
That's me. Hi, I'm George Hurst, seeking reelection to the Linwood City Council. You know, the first two years that I was on the council, I really was focused on making Linwood a safer place to live, and I did that through chairing the Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee, and I think our, our FA has improved service here. And then also I served on the SnoCom 911 Board. And I was involved in a consolidation between, there were two call centers in Snohomish County, one SnoCom, one SnoPAC. And between these two call centers, there happened to be 45,000 call transfers per year. And this meant delays in responding to 911 calls. And for me, the key thing that, that really changed my mind, made sure that this consolidation happened, was when we listened to a tape of the Mucko Teal shooting, the high school kids, and one of the boys that was shot in the back called 911. He was in Mucko Teal, the call went to a cell tower in Clinton, it bounced back into SnoPAC. Well, Mucko Teal was served by SnoCom, so that phone call was transferred, and he got a busy signal. And that was just unacceptable. So finally, we did get that consolidation going, and I, I think we're safer for it. My second year, my second, two years in the council, I'm going to emphasize housing. We have really a missing middle in Linwood, and we need to have codes and zones that will allow that missing middle to be built. Now, all four years in the council, I really have been an advocate for conservative fiscal spending, trying to hold back on taxes. I have voted very much against budgets that increase taxes, and I just would appreciate your vote as I seek reelection in November. Thank you.
Am I on? Oh, thank you. And next we'll move to position seven with Shannon Sessions.
Thank you, Teresa, and thank you, Linwood Chamber and the Linwood Today online news for coordinating this event for us. My unique professional and personal experience are my greatest asset as a city council member and a community leader. Throughout my four years on Linwood City Council, I'm known for being discerning, authentic leader with common sense. I'm wholly invested in the well-being for all in Linwood's fast-growing, vibrant, and diverse community. I have a hands-on approach to leadership, and I was appointed by my peers as the council's vice president in 2018. I led engagement with youth, elders, businesses, and helped make Linwood a veteran-friendly city. I have the courage to ask the hard questions and move complicated human services needs forward with compassion, but with boundaries. I have a positive reputation for having high integrity and deep trusted regional ties. This will help propel us into the future. Professionally, I am proud to say that I'm U.S. Air Force veteran. I'm a former firefighter, former enterprise newspaper editor, Linwood Police Public Information Officer, a small business owner, and currently the executive director of a nonprofit organization called Support Seven, serving victims of trauma at times of crisis. I'm a community stakeholder. I'm a Metterdale High School graduate. I have a communications and journalism's degree from the University of Washington, and I'm a resident of Linwood for more than three decades. My husband Keith and I, we've been married for 26 years, have raised our five children in the Edmonds School District. I believe good leaders have servants' hearts, and I'm a longtime Linwood Rotarian, countless years of volunteering in the schools with children, adults with disabilities at my church, and a lifetime member of the VFW Post 1040. And I'm an advocate for the Veterans Museum and Heroes Cafe. Thank you.
Thank you. And next will be Shirley Sutton.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here tonight. I know that it's going to be a really hard choice, but I think what, once you leave here, I hope you have a real wonderful understanding of who we are, each of us are, and what we can bring to our city. Working for over 20 years with a corporate 500 business, I gained great experience and insight to the areas that will benefit my community and assist the city council with its work for the betterment of our Linwood. Directing settlement negotiations and resolutions of personal injury claims through arbitration as well as working closely with union leaders, corporate and union attorneys, and related staff to resolve union and workers disputes and affair in consistent manner are experiences that will be improved and assist the city with similar real-life problems faced by the community and the city's workforce. Adding to these experiences, my years in education from grade school to high school as well as post-secondary education are marked by success in state and public grant writing for numerous real-life programs that helped my community. Helping the foster care programs, the homeless is not only the way to better the community, it also makes sense to direct those in need to the right programs, removing the lost time and cost to the community of treating people after the fact. As an educator, my goal has always been to reduce the current and real costly and time-consuming problems of substance abuse and ensuring that all residents deal timely with wellness issues that detract from their ability to work and contribute to Linwood. A strong and vibrant Linwood is a sure way to make our community more productive and welcoming to its residents, to those who visit, and to our already thriving business community. And I thank you very much.
Thank you for those introductory statements. Now we'll get on to the questions, and we will start with Mr. Smith. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
The top three concerns for businesses? Well, one is always, of course, the taxing and the, the fees that we impose on the businesses year after year. Businesses actually pay a lot of taxes in Linwood. Even if we didn't have to have the, the additional fees every single year for their business licenses, they pay a lot of taxes in Linwood, both through the, they provide taxes through the sales tax, they provide taxes through the various real estate taxes, they bring in business to Linwood, they bring in, most importantly, they bring in the jobs to Linwood. So I think that making businesses more, more affordable, easier for them to do business in Linwood is probably the biggest channels that we need to, to overcome.
Thank you very much. And I forgot to remind you, you had one minute, but you did just fine. So let's go on to position five, and we'll start this time with Dr. Shirley on the same question. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
Well, my experience in talking with businesses leads me to believe that the top three concerns businesses have is taxes, specifically the sales tax, which is 10.5% the highest of any of the cities in this area, including Seattle and Bellevue. The condition of the roads, public transit, transportation, how they can get, people can get around, can they get to the areas? There's 2,500 businesses here estimated in, in Linwood, of which obviously we know about the Alderwood Mall being the most important. And the next one would be public safety. Is the town safe? Do people feel safe to come here to do shopping and do business here? And there's, those are the three concerns that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go on to Ms. Crosby, please. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
Well, I believe and I think the three concerns for the business in Linwood is the growth. And the growth, Linwood going to need a leadership that can effectively manage that growth. And we need a welcoming environment as well. With growth is coming everything. It's coming housing, it's coming all this economic development, and we have to be aware of those. And we have to be aware that Linwood is a diverse, a diverse city, so we have to be prepared for that, too. We have to unify efforts and collaborate together with every single organization, with the Chamber of Commerce, with the city councils as well, and with economic development at the local level, and the state level, and federal level as well.
Thank you. Let's go on to position six, and we'll start with Mr. Hurst. What do you believe are the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
You know, I think businesses want to make sure that their customers can get to their place of business. That involves the traffic, the roads, but probably more concerned for them is what's going to happen in the future? What's going to happen when light rail comes? What kind of impact is that going to be? Because we're, we're going to be widening 44th, we're going to be widening 196th, and there's going to be bus rapid transit lines going down both, both streets. And I think we need to educate the business owners that this is going to happen and this is, could be an impact on them. Which transitioning into the other concern I think a business would have is they want to have a city that's a partner. They want a city that communicates, they want a city that makes it easy for them to do remodeling when they want to. And I think also cities now have to look at homelessness and what about trespassings? And what about needles in the place? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coelho, what do you believe are the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
Well, this might be an unpopular opinion, but in my experience, we're not worried about sales tax right now. The biggest concern with businesses, as far as I know, especially with the dominant business in Linwood being service and retail, is a labor shortage. The cost of living is spiking right now, and it's not because of the cost of milk, it's not because of the cost of energy, it's the cost of housing. So the top three would be affordable housing, affordable housing, and affordable housing because right now it's, it's getting really tough for, you know, even my staff to stay in the city with the way rent has been going up. The past few years it was going up five to eight percent every year. There's a reason that when I hosted my kickoff event at Biggie Ale's and I invited the owner of the brewery to speak, he ranted for five minutes about the inability to find a cook. It's probably the number one issue. It probably costs more to raise the wages to meet the housing demands right now, and that would be the top three concerns I would be worried about.
Thank you. We will move on to position seven, and we will start with Ms. Sutton. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
Thank you very much, Teresa. I believe the three that I would say, being already on the council member, being a council member for the last four years, is I believe that we need to be more inclusive of our diverse community, number one. When I think about all the things that we did as council, the events that we put on, we needed to have a better representation of people that live in our community. Otherwise, we're going to leave people out, and that's not what we want to do. As a community activist, I'm really sensitive to small businesses. Minority businesses are generally the ones that don't have the support that they need to be successful. They generally are underfunded or no-funded in many cases, but they try and make a living to be a good example of a community member that the city so deserves. What I believe also is that I know that all of us can do a better job about reaching out to every one of you, every one of you, because you're the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions, what do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns for businesses in Linwood?
Thank you, Teresa. I support that we need to grow our new and existing businesses and be friendly to our city businesses. I think the three top things that are concerning to them is safety, accessibility, and ways to bring new engaged customers. I would continue to advocate for working closely with them and seeking out more experts on this topic, such as our city center manager, economic development director, the Linwood Chamber of Commerce, and Economic Alliance of Snohomish County, and other regional and state partners to attract particular industries that would provide living wage careers as well to our city. I'm advocating for businesses and developments that want to enhance and be part of a robust, vibrant community and city center, a place where we can gather, engage, and be proud of while still protecting our already established neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope Linda doesn't mind because we worked on these questions, but we got so many good questions from you out there that I'm going to freelance a little bit and get to some of those as well right away because, for one thing, some of you already brought some of these up. And I want to start with this one, and we will start with, this is going to be easy to always start because we always start with Jim. Mr. Smith, "Some, some people in our community are concerned that the Seattle homeless problem will expand to Linwood. How would you mitigate those concerns and/or prevent the situation?" You have one minute.
Well, I think it's a very important concern. It's one that we need to be addressing right away. First thing we need to do is identify the homeless situation. So many people, both in the community, so many people that are in government, so many people that are in, that work with the homeless, they still, they still can't identify what the homeless is. But when we look at this homeless in Seattle, the homeless in Seattle is primarily street people, and we need to be addressing that. I address that every single week. I'm working with, I come to a lot, our neighbors in need, and I talk to a lot of these people. So many of them are on drugs, so many of them are on heroin. We need to be working directly to help these people get off the drugs and have some, basically, we need tough love to be able to help them with their, with their problems, with their addictions, and we need to be doing more to be able to give them opportunities to be able to do that. Sometimes, just as we, as we do when we're, when we are, work with our children, we need to be, again, tough love to give them the right answers.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to position five, and Ms. Crosby, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. "Some people in our community are concerned that the Seattle homeless problem will expand to Linwood. How would you mitigate those concerns and/or prevent the situation?"
Well, first of all, as a researcher, I always, I go and identify what is, that happened and what the needs. Talking about homeless is a sensitive topic, and it is, exists on the national level, is not only Linwood. But we have to identify what kind of homeless or what the reasons they are homeless. They can exist financial issues, domestic violence, people that lose jobs, could be medical disaster, language and cultural barriers, too, mental illness, so we can not generalize over all. And well, Linwood need to work and collaborate at the local level and the, again, state level and federal level and government level. And well, as a regional leaders, we have to bring together these, these needs and bring solutions. And I going to acknowledge, I'm sorry, my time is, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. So now we move to Dr. Shirley. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Obviously, there's not enough time to actually address the issue, is it? We're all going to have difficulty. I see homeless as a mislabel. We've mislabeled it for 15 years. There are three compartments. I see this like a doctor would see three different diseases. Each requires their own treatment plan. So we have people who are on addiction, they have problems with using substances, they need to get off the substances, and they need one to get off the substances. We have people with mental health problems who also sometimes have addiction problems as well, and we also have people who are truly homeless because financially they're on their outs. Those, and each of those requires its own particular plan of action. And again, I have 15 seconds, so that's about all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to position six, and we will start this time with Mr. Coelho. We'll move on to position six, and we will start this time with Mr. Koeho. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Yeah, sure, why not?
"Some people in our community are concerned that the Seattle homeless problem will expand to Lynwood. How would you mitigate those concerns and/or prevent the situation?"
Well, first off, we need to recognize what it is and what it isn't. I think the last nightly count King County did, they had about, I think, four times more homeless people than the entirety of Snoomish County. So we need to recognize that we don't have a giant crisis on our hands here, but we do have a lot of people that need help. And a lot of these people are addicted to substances, or have just flunked out of our mental health facilities that we currently have. As a city, there's only so much we can do, but what we do well, we should really emphasize. And that's why I'm a big supporter of Chief Davis and his initiative to put a full-time social worker on staff at the police station, to go out and meet with the homeless, meet with those in need at the point of contact, and then try and direct them to services. The other thing we do really well is we partner, and so I'm a big fan of our new Civic Justice Center that, in partnership with Community Health Center of Snoomish County, is going to provide social services and rehabilitation services at the jail, at the court. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Let's see. How much time? 30 seconds?
One minute.
One minute, one minute. Okay. We can solve homelessness by building more homes. There we go. No. Right now, the homeless population that we see now is a little different than what it's been a few years ago. There's a, there's a lot of single young men, addicted young men, that are now part of that population, and we have to address that. And we do have that with an embedded social worker within the police department, and I think we need to expand that, because we are able to use the diversion center that's up in Everett. But again, it's more about resources, having places for people to go, detox centers. Yes, the Lynwood Justice Center is in the future, but it's a couple of years away. One thing I did do was get a neighborhood parking permit ordinance passed through the council, so that at least RVs are not, that's one way to handle the RV problem as far as parking, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
The homeless issue, opioid epidemic, and mental health concerns, along with other addictions, are heartbreaking and complicated topic, not just for Lynwood, but for the county and the state as well. The last thing I want Lynwood to do is start looking like Seattle. I am an advocate for the compassion with boundaries philosophy. This is where we lead with compassion by walking alongside these individuals who are homeless and struggling, and removing barriers and connecting them with specific needed resources to help themselves. But if they still refuse help, we should provide boundaries required to make this city safe for all residents. That means enforcing laws we already have in place and not tolerating those crimes. This isn't just a police responsibility, by the way, but also our city departments and you, our community members. More than ever, we need our general public to be aware and educated, so you can be part of the solution.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. "Some people in our community are concerned that the Seattle homeless problem will expand to Lynwood. How would you mitigate those concerns and/or prevent the situation?"
I think it's very important for all of us to come together, number one, as a community, and figure out which is priority, because we do have some other issues, like safety, like our roads, that are also needing to have attention. For the individuals that are homeless, I've been working in and out of homeless communities for at least 25, 30 years. Was one of the first grant writers to bring dollars to Yakima School District to design a program for homeless families. When you have families that are generational homeless, it's really tough to do much to help them, except give them something that is very temporary to take care of their own personal, basic needs. I think we need to use more of a philosophy of doing wraparound services to help everyone that needs this kind of help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question. And we will start with Mr. Smith, of course, again. "There's a widespread perception, deserved or not, that when light rail arrives, that parking and traffic in the surrounding neighborhoods will be severely impacted. What would you do on council to help reduce the possibility of this happening?"
Boy, that's more than a one-minute question. The, much of, much of the mitigation has to be done in advance, and I think that the administration has been working on it, but I think we also need to be working more to see what we can do to, to make it where Lynwood is not the magnet for all the cars throughout South County coming through Lynwood in order to get into the transit. About 25, 30 years ago, about 30 years ago, we were discussing this, and that was the biggest concern that we had on the council as far as what can we do, what is going to be the impact of having a station right in Lynwood? And now we're going to be seeing it, and I'd be very candid about it, I think we're going to have to be very diligent. I don't have the answer right offhand, but I think we are going to have to be working on that now, as opposed to just letting light rail be built and then deal with the, with the problems that comes up to it.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Shirley, you get to start this time. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Well, there's no really good solution for the light rail problem. It's coming head at us. As far as Snoomish County is going to now drop all of its bus lines, instead of going into Seattle, they're going to drop them right into us. Roads need, the mecanum roads need concrete underneath them. We need to work with the county and the state to increase the roads' preparedness for that, and some of that is being planned right now. They're planning another 500 parking spots. They're planning on moving 18,000 people on the rail. We, that is, we need to be talking to the people that are doing the planning, and I plan on doing that, and advocating for a more realistic approach to how we're going to deal with moving people to the rail. So that's, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I understand it can be a little intimidating to watch your city grow substantially, but we really need a responsible leadership that will take us into the future and protect our citizens. And it is a challenge time for Lynwood residents, but I believe the light rail is going to bring opportunities. This is an opportunity. And also, well, with all this growing with the light rail, some of the byproducts of the light rail will be housing, parking, traffic, citizens' safety, employment opportunities, and much more. And I would like to share with you during, in doing doorbellin', many people mention, and they say, "Well, we haven't had trail, or train, years ago, 60 years ago." So same, my, okay, I'm done with that, thank you.
It's a challenge. Thank you very much. All right, we'll, we'll move on to, and it's, you don't get, you don't get graded on how much you leave out either, it's okay. So let's, let's move on to position six, and we start this time with Mr. Hurst.
All right, great, thank you. Yes, light rail is going to have a huge impact. So not only are those 18,000 commute trips a day going to be there, but during rush hour, there's going to be buses going in and out of that station every 35 seconds. Now, I serve on the community transit board, and we've been discussing a bus rapid transit line, the orange line, coming down 196. The emphasis is going to be, as Doc Shirley said, community transit's not going to go into Seattle anymore. Their job is to get people into the light rail station, and they are not just going to bring them into Lynwood. They're going to, their blue line is going to be extended so that we, people can go into the shoreline station as well. But the impact's going to be great. I myself, I would advocate that the city look at a mini-transit system, and people kind of look funny at me when I say it, but autonomous vehicles will be coming. We still have five years before that light rail station, and I would like to see an autonomous mini-transit system coming in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koeho, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good. Yeah, so we have to identify what the issue is here, and that's the issue of traffic. And traffic is caused by cars. So how do we get cars off the road? Well, we can't take the Seattle Mike McGinn strategy of just making it so miserable to drive a car that you start biking to work. Instead, what we can do is, we have this giant opportunity, where we're making a downtown center, a new downtown core, we're planning density right now. So using really smart urban design to design complete neighborhoods can get cars off the road. If we get density in mass transit corridors, we can make sure that people can commute to work, get the cars off the road. But that doesn't stop people from driving in our residential streets to get to where they want to shop. So the other element is making sure that grocery stores, things that people want to go and do, see the movies, are within rough walking distance. If we can plan complete neighborhoods, we can keep cars off the roads, both going to work and living and playing in Lynwood.
Thank you. We'll move on to position, I already lost my place, seven, and we will start with Ms. Sutton. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes.
Okay. "There's a widespread perception, deserved or not, that when light rail arrives, that parking and traffic in the surrounding neighborhoods will be severely impacted. What would you do on council to help reduce the possibility of this happening?"
Well, I think, number one, just somewhat looking at the situation, how the traffic flow would be, one thing that I would like to recommend is possibility of one ways. I know that if we eliminate some of the traffic in one-way direction, I should say, then I think it would help, but it's not going to eliminate. There's no, no cure for this one. I don't see that at all. But I think there's ways that we can make a less impact with getting people out of their cars, and walking, biking, whatever else they can do, take the bus, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next question. We're going to return to a couple of, oh, jeez, I knew I was going to eventually make a mistake. Ms. Sessions, thank you.
That's okay. I thought I was off the hook with the traffic question. Darn it. Traffic is certainly a problem all over Lynwood, and so will be parking. A few ways we have already been planning ahead for this, though, for the future increase in traffic, is putting in order an infrastructure for our city center and light rail area. Strategic preparation and upgrades have been incurring underground for many years. Some specific ways the public will notice above ground, we are addressing the future increase in traffic, is by widening 196th Street, which we received a federal grant for this, and adding new streets through the city center and nearby developments around that light rail area, such as a new 42nd Avenue West and others. In addition, the city center plan and light rail plan is a big, has a big focus on, like we've heard, multimodal transportation, so that we aren't just needing vehicles to travel, but also making it pedestrian safe and friendly, and including other public transportation and parking options as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to the next question. Start with Mr. Smith again. "What do you see as the top issue for the city, and is that any different than the top issue for the county? And, I know this is a lot in a minute, what are your strategies to address it?"
Could you repeat the question?
I can. "What do you see as the top issue for the city, and is that any different than for the county? And if you want to just talk about what the top issue for the city is, that's fine, because you don't have a lot of time. I think I'm just going to edit as I go along. What are your strategies to address that top issue for the city?"
Well, as I mentioned earlier, probably the topic, when I'm talking to people, and from my experience, what I found is probably the, the most concerning topic, the most concern amongst the citizens, is the taxes and fees in Lynwood. Now, there's no way that, that we can just go ahead and say, "Okay, the next budget, we're going to cut out this fee, this fee, this fee." We're going to cut out all the fees, all the taxes. But what we can do is sit down and, between the council members and the administration, with the mayor, we can sit down and say, "Okay, what can we do to cut back expenses?" My experience on the council in the past has been that cutting back was, was usually not the point of conversation. So we need to cut back, and then through the, a period of time, we have added two, we've had 6% to about six or seven different utility taxes. Maybe we can take two of those off per year for the next three or four years, but it's going to have to be something that we sit down and work together on. We need to collaborate.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Ms. Crosby, position five. "The top issue for the city and your strategies to address it?"
Well, is one issue only, or they consider they are?
Yeah, the top, top issue. If you pick one.
Okay, the top issue I consider is, in knocking doors, I hear for the people, is public safety. And the public safety, well, I have considerable experience working with law enforcement through the county to address youth crime and to develop cross-cultural collaborations for safe communities. And specifically, I was working with the Snoomish Sheriff and Everett Police doing gun and drug recognition, and how to obtain the, read youth petition, internet safety for the schools and the school district in McCalltoyo, domestic violence issues. And this is just to name a few issues in which I have experience. I work with the YNCA churches, the Boys and Girls Clubs, and I believe that my qualifications fit Lynwood needs.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley, your top issue for the city and your strategies to address it?
Top issue for the city is taxes. I keep hearing that over and over and over from, from the voters. The reason we have taxes, higher taxes, at least from the city standpoint, is because we've spent about $6 million more, dollars more every year for the last four years. We went from a $98 million budget expenses to $113 million from 2015. That can't continue on. So my, I don't believe we're going to be able to cut taxes. I don't think the council will cut taxes, but what we need to do is control our spending, and we need to not spend any more than we are. And if that means maybe just cut somewhere, then that's what we'll have to do. And as far as the question on the county, I'm not sure what, I'm not ready for a county council race, so I don't exactly understand what their, what their top issues are as far as they're, what they're concerned about. But obviously, taxes and growth are big issues for them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to position six, and we start with Mr. Koeho.
So the number one problem I see in our community right now is actually displacement of our residents. You have to remember that 50% of our residents in Lynwood are actually renters, and sometimes they don't get, you know, represented on the council. I'm a renter, I know what they're going through. I've been through displacement in Seattle, and I've seen how it can completely change the characteristics of neighborhoods and parts of cities. It can change the soul of places. It displaces, you know, the youth, it displaces people in the community, it makes it really difficult for people to become engaged citizens when they're moving from, especially down here, from Edmonds to Lynwood to McCalltoyo to Marysville? Yeah, that's a place. So as people move further and further away, they have less ability to contribute to their community. I see it as a big issue, and I would address it with collaborating with the rest of council to adopt some affordable housing strategy, relaxing zoning laws, and planning density. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Thank you. Yeah, no, the people that I talk to, it is all about taxes. Since 2014, we've, the majority on the council have raised taxes and fees eight times, and it's just not acceptable. We are, we are driving people out of the city that they cannot afford to live here anymore. So I think what we need to look at is that never has the city had more revenue coming in, but never have we spent as much money. And that's where the control comes in, and that's really where, I've been the voice on the council, trying to control some spending. It just, it just is a hard road to get people to agree to, to finally cut back. For four years, I fought to get at least the city tab fee on cars taken away, because that was not voted on by the people. And the council, which serves as a transportation benefit, district board, just would not vote to end that tax. And we have to have a will to be able to control taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to Ms. Sessions.
Thank you. First off, top priorities must be for any city, public safety, streets, and sewer. But also for us in Linwood, it's housing. Linwood needs all kinds of housing. I'm in favor of more low-income housing, more condos, more missing middle, more market rate, and more senior housing. We need all kinds of housing in Linwood, and a variety of it. The council is currently working with staff to find more incentives for developers to build more low-income housing, or at least low-income with a percentage of low-income in some housing within the market rate. I am not in favor, however, of requiring developers to build low-income, because I believe we can catch more flies with honey than vinegar.
Thank you. Would you like the question repeated? What do you see as the top issue for the city, and what are your strategies to address it? And this, of course, is to Ms. Sutton.
I think it's very important for all of us to remember that our citizens are our most important priority. Yes, there will always be taxes, and there'll always be death, because that's the way it is. And unless we can figure out a way to curb spending, you've heard about that already, have a budget that we agreed on and stick to, I think that that would actually be a better way rather than constantly raising taxes. That's not the way that a community should be treated. There's other things that we can do in terms of being a little bit more friendly, in terms of bringing, for instance, some of the events back, where people can get and socialize better, get to know each other better. I think socialization is imperative, especially when you have a growing city like we are in right now, and high crime as well.
Thank you very much. Well, I've got a great follow-up question from somebody in the audience to what you just, most of you said, so here you go. I think this is going to be a challenge. We'll start with Mr. Smith. If you promise to lower taxes for Linwood citizens, how do you plan to do that solely on your own, if you need the support of other council members?
Oh, that's easy. You need to be collaborating, not just with the other council members, but think about it. Of all the members that are up here on this forum, we had a majority vote that we need to do something about the taxes. So perhaps if we, the council members that are elected, along with those that are currently have two more years, along with the administration, we sit down and going, you know what, things are good. We've got a lot of money coming in. What can we do to give back to our community? What can we do to actually sit and, what we can do is sit down, and where can we cut back the taxes that have gone up so much? It used to be where Linwood didn't have utility taxes. Now we're maxed out. It used to be where we didn't have $40, $40 in taxes on every one of your cars. The sales tax, that's something we need to fine tune. But taxes can be reduced, and they can be reduced if we work on where's our spending going, what can we do there, and where can we cut back on the taxes?
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Crosby. How would you work to lower taxes, if you agree taxes should be lowered? How would you get the support of other city council members to do that?
Well, I understand that a lot of people here are concerned about taxes, and my concern as well is yours. But what several people don't understand is, out of every dollar of sales taxes the city receives, only a little over 10 cents. And door-belling people ask me, if I vote for you, do you promise me that you are going to lower the taxes? My answer was and is, I cannot promise anything like that, but I can commit myself to advocate for you at the local level, at the state level, and I will be transparent, responsible, and of course, I never will vote for a taxing city. It is not necessary, if not equitable and fair. And by the way, I don't know if you are aware, but Linwood handout, you can see here where your taxes go. And I encourage you to stop in the city hall to get, because people, we need educate ourselves.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley?
Again, a minute. Taxes, it's a thorny issue. The voters are upset about it. They don't see where they're getting their benefit from the amount of taxes they're paying. We don't have any control of state taxes, which are going to rise now here in November. We're not, we have no control over county taxes. But we do have control over our sales tax and our property tax. We can't really cut taxes until we cut expenses. And the only way that we can do that is by at least controlling them and hoping that our sales tax revenue and our property tax revenue continue to go up, as the economy is doing fairly well. So my plan is to, is to keep us at the 113 million, maybe 114 million, and that's, and not allow the growth of our government anymore. And that will help us to, at some point, cut taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Great, thank you. You know, one person can't do it, believe me, I know, because I've been trying. And you need four votes to be able to do anything on a council. And so what I'm hoping is that during this election, that we get some folks on the council who have a will to actually try to control taxes. You know, I'm glad that it was mentioned, the article that was in the newsletter. I would invite, on taxes, I would invite you to go to my website, hurstforlinwood.com, and there's a video there about the tax shell game. We are being told, you know, that the city has lowered the property tax. You know, it just didn't pan out, because if you start looking at the services that we have to pay for the city and the police, and now we have to pay the fire on the RFA, our property taxes for those services within the city went up. And it's that type of attitude that we have to combat on the council. We just have to have some control, and I think you can work together with people to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coe?
So I'm going to pivot, like I usually do, and say that, you know, while cutting taxes is great and all, I think what people really get upset about is wasteful spending. And so what I would do is really just make sure that our tax dollars are being spent as efficiently as possible. You have to be vigilant. In government, unfortunately, there's waste. That's just the way it is. But what you can do is be vigilant, be always vigilant. And fortunately, we have really great experts working at the city, like the Economic Development Director, David Kleitch, who's doing, right this moment, an efficiency test of the entire city, and trying to find ways to make things more efficient, make sure your tax dollars are being spent responsibly. Once we figure out what's not being spent responsibly, then we can talk about reducing those expenditures and then reducing taxes. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
All right. If you promise to lower taxes for the Linwood citizens, how do you plan to do that solely on your own, if you need the support of other city council members?
Well, you know, it's really hard to, when you talk about money for a lot of folks, because this really is uncomfortable subject. I think if I went over my budget every time, every month, I would have a problem with understanding and prioritizing. And I think that sometimes gets, that's what happens with cities, and they don't, they get themselves in trouble. I think one of the things that will eventually have to happen with our, with our city, is that we have to really become more, not only conservative, but also more inventive in terms of what else can we do as a city to bring more money into our city without taxing our residents. And we do have assistance for those that are, for those that need assistance with their taxes, per se. But it's, it's, it's not workable for the many, the many individuals that really need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
Thank you. Yes, this is a big topic that I'm also concerned about. As we've heard, I mean, one council member has very little control. But it is important of how you work well with others, and how to win friends and influence people, really. And, and that's, that's hopefully what I have done already on the city council. Taxes generally are decided by the voters. Our most recent vote approved to approve sales tax was forwarded to the voters by our Transportation Benefit District, which is also combined of the city council. And this focus was much needed on improvement of our streets. I spent my first three years on the council as the city's Audit and Insurance Finance Committee on that committee, helping keep us accountable for good fiscal management. And some of the ways I'm going to continue to help ensure this is to plan for outcome-oriented budgeting, avoid increasing ongoing expenditures that are not sustainable, and support Linwood businesses and expansion of the Alderwood Mall, so it remains a regional gem and thrives, and continue to look for ways we can regionalize and be more efficient with our resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go on to, I think, sort of a positive question here, after we talked about taxes, which many people don't think are positive. Let's start with Mr. Smith, of course. What do you see as the city's biggest strength or strengths? Strength.
Well, before I answer that question, I did want to mention that it looks like we got at least three votes to lower the taxes, if things go as we've heard tonight. Just need another vote for somebody else on the council. The biggest strength that Linwood has is its, it's always had, has been its sense of community. Linwood for, I was first on the council in 1988. And one thing that is still true today, as it was then, is Linwood is a caring community. Linwood is a, is a community that has grown and developed throughout the last several years, the last several decades. It has always been growing and always improving as far as how the people of Linwood treat each other. You hear a lot about how, as a country, we are divided or whatever. But here in Linwood, I see more and more people coming into our community that get along with the people of our community. And that's a great thing, and I hope that we can continue doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby?
Well, for me, I think Linwood is home. The Crosby family been here for more than 60 years. And Linwood is welcoming city. We are in the center of the 405 and the I-5. We're very well situated. There's a lot of opportunities in Linwood. We are close to Seattle, of course. We can commute. And I see the, this plan, they're coming for growth. It is full for amazing opportunities.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley?
I think one of the things that makes Linwood unique, and I've had voters tell me this, that moved from Seattle years ago, that came to Linwood because it had a rural feel to it. Certainly, we're not Arlington or Marysville or something, but, but it feels rural. It feels, there's lots of trees here. We've got a lot of green zones. And we do have a lot of parks all over this city. So it always kind of, doesn't feel like concrete. And that's why I say, I said, it's probably the biggest change since 1962, that where we went from agricultural to a, a, a single-family bedroom community, so to speak. And we're going to, and we're going to add more residents here, and more apartments, and more condos, and that's all going to be necessary. Somehow, I hope that we'll be able to maintain that rural feeling, that not, this isn't the big concrete town that people really like so much as part of being Linwood. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have to make sure I've got the right order here, because I've lost it. Looks like Mr. Coe.
Yeah, so probably I would find, one of Linwood's greatest strengths is its real inclusive nature and its volunteer programs. This completely astounded me and floored me when I first found out about them. My wife and I have gone through, or are going through, Linwood University. She's gone through the Citizens Academy, where people can go and learn about our police force. And Linwood University, people can go and find out where their tax dollars are being spent, can find out about how programs are made. They can see the city council members put on a play about how city council works. That was fun. But yeah, people don't realize we get tens of thousands of hours of volunteers' work every year. And it's just incredible, the civic engagement, the activating of our citizens. I want to encourage that. I want to advocate for that. When I tell people about that in Seattle, they kind of look at me with a dumbfounded look of disbelief. Going forward, I want to help Lynn Sordell with the Friends of Scriber Lake Project to kind of get volunteers to help step up and take care of our parks. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
I would say that one of Linwood's strengths is, to use a real estate term, location, location, location. We're at the confluence of I-405, I-5. We're going to have light rail here. We have an opportunity to be a regional model for Snohomish County, especially about housing. Some folks have talked about affordable housing in this city. There is no plan for, to build affordable housing in this city. We are building apartments all over the place. We've got 1,500 apartments permitted surrounding the mall and in the, around the transit center. So we need to get serious about affordable housing. We can, the council couldn't even define what affordable housing was. I tried to get them to find it by the RCW, and I was voted down. So we need to work on being that regional model. We can, we can really be able to get the missing middle in here if we start changing some codes and zones. And yes, ma'am, I will stop.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. What do you see as the city's biggest strength?
Oh, one biggest strength?
Well, you could do, I started out with strengths, but again, we only have one minute.
Okay, yes, true.
Up to you.
True, true, true. Oh, there are a lot, and a lot have been said, but I think I'm just going to focus on how we are really now, I'm proud to say, a veteran-friendly city. We have our one-stop shop, where veterans and family members of veterans can go to get more information about their claims, or housing, or housing issues, or medical issues and different things. We have a monthly Heroes Cafe that grows every month. We hoped for 20 people the first time, and we get more than 100 people there each month. In addition, we have a Veterans Museum, and we have recently adopted a ship. And I look forward to talking to you more about a Veterans Center in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton, what do you see as the city's biggest strength or strengths, if you want to go there?
I think Linwood is a very caring city. When I moved here in 2001, that was one of my experiences, that as I was walking across the campus, first day, nobody even knew who I was. I always got greeted with every single person I came in contact with. I was found that very unusual for a city. So since then, of course, and living, living here for 19 years, I still love living here. I've been on the council for four years now, and it's just been a pleasure, a real growth pleasure. And I'm hoping that things will change a little bit, maybe to the good, where we have more of our residents participating in our, our council meetings. We want to hear your voice, so please attend. Monday nights, it's very important. I don't like to be caught in the midst of having misunderstandings. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, since many of you have brought up this issue as well, here's a related follow-up question, starting with Mr. Smith. What plans or ideas do you have for bringing affordable housing to Linwood?
You know, that question is a lot more difficult than it sounds, because affordable housing has been banted around forever in Linwood. And I remember when, years ago, 25, 30 years ago, when people were talking about building affordable housing, the houses ended up being $300,000, $250,000 to $300,000. The developer had The developer had claimed at that point that the reason they were doing that was they wanted to have their, the lot size minimized so they could make it affordable. But affordable housing means so much different to different situations. Someone that's making $20 an hour, how, what is affordable housing for them? Someone on the street, that's a whole different story. Someone that's on drugs on the street, how do you talk about affordable housing for someone like that? Affordable housing is a whole discussion in itself, and affordable housing and what someone can really afford is two different things.
Thank you, and we will go on to Dr. Shirley for what are your plans or ideas for bringing affordable housing to Linwood?
Well, again, I think he actually hit a good point, how you define affordable housing. When I came here in 91, houses were $100,000. Now the houses behind us that they built are $800,000. How do we, how does the city of Linwood control that? I don't think that can be done by us. What we can do, I think, is try to make sure that our regulations, et cetera, don't get in the way of building housing. For example, affordable housing might be having a mother-in-law apartment or a little house in your backyard. You have a big enough lot to do that, and the city actually gets in the way of doing that. So costs can cost you anywhere from $5,000 to $20,000 to get the permits you need. So we could certainly get, best thing the city can do is get out of the way, if we can, by regulations, et cetera, and limiting the, making it tougher to build houses here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby?
Well, affordable housing is a multi-faced problem, and I attend both work sessions held by the Linwood City Council to address this issue. We have a need to build affordable housing to attract and keep working families, but we have a significant need to protect the property values of those families who have invested in Linwood for decades. And we need to start by identifying those residential areas and zoning where affordable housing can affordably be developed. And also, we need to review where areas can be rezoned or developed into housing solutions. There is a lot of work to be done, but with my experience and as a researcher, can we get a starter?
Thank you. And we'll start with Mr. Hurst on the next group.
All right. Yeah, again, it's a definition of what affordable housing is, you know, really, it's, you don't want to spend more than 30% of your income on housing, and that's just the standard that was, has been in place for mortgages. Now, what we need, again, is to be able to build the missing middle, the houses that a first-time buyer, or maybe a senior citizen that wants to downsize, can afford, and these are just not being built in our city right now. The latest housing that I've seen is, you know, $700,000, $800,000. Now, if we're going to talk about low-income affordable housing, then we do need to start talking about, well, what's, what kind of incentives do we offer? And I can tell you right now, we don't offer any, and so that has to be changed. And, you know, so the definition of affordable housing, great, let's just build both affordable and low-income. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koia?
So I'm a little bit of a free-market guy, so my first instinct is to say that we need to build more housing. You can get more housing by adjusting and easing zoning, changing it, so we have stepped up zoning as we get closer to our downtown centers while mitigating the flood of people that want to move into our suburbs. We can find ways to streamline our permitting processes. We can find out where we have onerous regulations and do all kinds of little plans like that. But the idea is get more housing out there. That can be, you know, rentals, that can be condos now that those are coming online. In addition to that private approach, though, that's not going to solve the whole problem. We also need to have a public policy approach, and what we can do is work with a lot of these new state laws that are being passed right now, like Washington Bill 1406, to find new ways of finding revenue to attack these problems. We can also create incentives for developers to make policies that will work for our workers, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sutton, what plans or ideas do you have for bringing affordable housing to Linwood?
Okay, well, that's a, that's a real wish. I do know that affordable housing, in going through my mind, we've had some residents come to our meetings and been very unhappy about the escalating cost of housing, period. And unless we take a look at some of the salary structure, where people are working two and three, four jobs, we're not going to be able to make that dream come true for everybody, and it's unfortunate. We also can think about partnering with other surrounding cities in terms of contributing and building some type of a village where people can really live and be safe. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
Thank you. Just like one council member can't, you know, make a big change without getting others involved, one council member isn't the only one who is advocating for affordable housing and trying to find new ways to do this in Linwood. I was also an advocate for Housing Roundtable, like a majority of us on the council were, and we did that to learn more and be educated about that. So that is happening. We are being educated. Like I said before, I do support incentivizing for developers to include more low-income housing within the market rate or on its own, and I am in favor of a variety of housing, including low-income. But we also need to find ways to incorporate and create an enterprise opportunity where these families who are in the downtown core and are having living wage jobs have a place where they can live and play, and they'll need housing as well. And it's an important priority for me that while we're doing all this, that we're still protecting the already established neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to a question from the audience, again, starting with Mr. Smith. Why should the LGBTQ+ community vote for you?
Say that again?
Why should the LGBTQ+ community vote for you?
I think that with, with all communities, you want to look at who is going to be fair and treat everybody equally, and that's so important for no matter who it is or what community. I think that if you have someone from that community that comes up to me and asks if they're going to be treated fairly, absolutely. We shouldn't be treating anyone differently than anyone else. No one deserves to get, to be raised up above everyone else, and no one needs to be taken down by our community. We need to treat everyone as if they are equal, that they are like ourselves, and everybody in that community also has a responsibility to treat everyone else with the same respect that they're being treated.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, why? Because I'm very honest. I, I'm part of the diversity committee, I mean, the, sorry, the diversity, I'm Latina, I'm bilingual, I'm thinking outside the box, I'm loyal, I work with multicultural diversities here in the community and also in the state level, and well, because I'm be transparent.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley?
So why should the LGBTQ+ community vote for me? Because I believe in Declaration of Independence, that every human being is allowed life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that we're all American citizens, and that we're all voters in this community. We all have the rights to expect a government that responds to us and to our needs as human beings, and I will continue to fight for the every voter in this, in the Linwood city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koia?
Well, I have a proven track record at my business around the table of supporting the LGBTQ+ community. We celebrate Pride every year. It's a great little gala. We have a monthly LGBTQ Gamer Nights. It's really great, meeting with that community. I've had staff members who have taught me a thing or two. I think we're all learning right now, and, you know, it's, it's a learning process for us all, it's a learning process for the city. I think I will be an advocate for elevating these voices in our community and making sure they feel welcome, and I just want to say that I'm excited for next year's first Linwood Pride in the Park, and I hope to see some of you there.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
I guess I would ask, why wouldn't you vote for me? I think that when you become a city council member, you actually swear an oath that you're going to, will abide by the Washington State Constitution and the U.S. Constitution, and within those legal forms are protections for, for everyone. And I don't think that within this city that we can stand for any type of discrimination. You know, I've, okay, actually, you know, within my own family, if, if I did not support that community, I would be rejecting some, some of my siblings, so I would just say there's no reason not to vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
Thank you. In my first term on the city council, I've supported a variety of resolutions and changes that are necessary in the process of building more trustworthy, open relationships with a variety of groups in Linwood, such as advocating and attending citywide racial equity training, adopting a resolution to make Linwood a safe and welcoming city, strengthening the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, and voting to establish the city's first Human Services Commission, just to name a few. I will also continue to support our Human Resources Department as they find creative ways and meaningful ways to engage future employees who look more like the people who we serve.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton?
Thank you very much. This is very personal for me because I have family members that are gay, as they wish to be called, and I support them in every activity that they invite me to. I feel that I have, I have developed a real good standing relationship with some of the individuals here, and not only in Linwood, but also in the entire state. So, again, I, I, this is my life, and it's important for me to be honest and open about it, and, again, the city has a no-hate model, and I think that's something that I, I will live and die for. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are almost coming to the 8:25 mark, and I have so many more questions, but, again, we did promise to get you out of here at a reasonable hour, so I'm going to do one more question from the audience, and then we'll go to closing statements, so we'll be just a tad bit late, but I hate to leave this one out because I think it's important. Mr. Smith, starting with you. As Linwood grows, what do you plan to do to protect single-family neighborhoods?
That's, you know, that is, comes to the heart of what we need to be doing as a council. We have, we have a community here, and we are a very welcoming community. We get back to that, and I think that anyone that has come into Linwood has seen that. But we also need to protect the people that have been, the old timers here. I know, I noticed that we do have a couple old timers. Wally is here, Lauren is here. I was going to, I was going to welcome you guys as old timers, but we're all really old timers. But we need, what we need to be doing, and you've seen around your community, where people are not able to stay in their, their house because it, the, everything, all the rates are going up so much, the costs of living in their homes are getting to be outrageous, so we need to be doing more to be able to keep the people that live here, to make sure that they are, be able to stay here, and I think that's a, should be a highest priority for the council. No matter who gets elected up here, it has to be a very, very high priority for the city of Linwood and the council.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley?
Well, I stated before, what I think the strengths or definitions of what Linwood is, is, is this kind of rural, single-family home community has been, with certainly a lot of businesses here as a retail center over the last 20, 30 years. How do we protect single-family hous, housing? Well, goes back to everything that I've been saying already. If we tax it too high, they're going to be forced to leave. If we, public safety gets out of hand, people will just find another place to live besides living here, and we want people to stay here. The growth has to be managed. We certainly don't want to do what Bellevue did, which is build apartments everywhere, so we have to be strict on our adherence to the zones that have established already, and I, we look at those even more. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby?
Well, I will, I, we love to work with the community and identify the needs, identify how many families, the priorities, the, the Linwood has already. One of the things I really enjoy to do in Dorbellian is because I have the opportunity to talk one-on-one with the people, and I identify exactly what are the needs. And I promise that I going to do again, I mean, if I, if everything going positive, I don't mind to go, to go to the neighborhoods and ask and have forums over there and identify exactly the needs as a single families, and more, more, because as a researcher is, what I do, I going to buy, to go to the community, identify the needs, and develop appropriate programs.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Great, thank you. I think the, the first way to protect the single-family residences is to make them not burdened by a lot of property tax. But also, we need to, to really look at, how do, how do we keep the senior citizens, that Jim Smith is one, how do we keep them within their homes? You know, what kind of services can we provide so that they can stay in their home? Or do we look at our ADU, our, our ADU ordinance, well, so it's building cottages in, in the back? Maybe we should allow some of that, so that the senior citizens can actually live still in their, in their residence, or they can move to the back and they can have family members or whatever move into those homes. But it's, it's really going to be hard that, I'm getting waved here, but the fact is that we just need, we do need to look at our zones and codes to make sure that we are protecting those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koia?
So one of the reasons people might be moving out is a price escalation on their home values, and while that's good when you're selling, when you're trying to live there, particularly on a fixed income, those taxes are going up for no return. So how do we keep those prices from just being artificially spiked? Well, we make sure that we are proactive about achieving density where we can have it, and obviously, we don't want, you know, giant apartment complexes in the middle of our little one-bedroom, sorry, single-family home neighborhoods. But where we can, next to 99, in our new downtown core, we need to make sure we have enough density to take in all these new residents that are coming whether we like it or not, and these new residents typically have high wages, and they can afford $800,000 homes. So let's be proactive, let's collaborate with the council to formulate a plan, and let's densify where we can.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton, what would you do, what would you plan to do to protect single-family neighborhoods as Linwood grows?
Well, I think first, first of all, I would champion that we need to find ways to get families more living wages, because generally, at this point in time, we have a number of our, our single-family members, again, leaving Linwood because they cannot afford it anymore. So to me, that's looking at the salary structure, number one. Number two, making sure that we have to enforce codes and zoning laws, of course, but also making it, making it accessible. We also have We also have ways that family members, look out for family members, and, and neighbors, looking out for neighbors as well. So, people work really hard for what they have, and I think it's important to sanction that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
Thank you. As I've said a couple times tonight, this is one of my priorities, and that's protecting established neighborhoods already. You know, actually, I have to give credit to city councils that came before us, and that includes Jim Smith, former city council member. He's an experienced life person. And it was councils before us that planned years ago for our upcoming city center in downtown core. We used to call this the Linwood Triangle, and that area is down 198th, along 44th, 48th, 196th, and next to I-5, across from the Linwood Convention Center. That was purposeful, even back then, because it was such a priority to protect those established neighborhoods. And so I thank them for that. And as we continue this process over 20, 25 years, this is still something that we're making sure of and keeping that growth right in that area.
Thank you. All right, we are now to the closing statements, and you each have one minute, and we will start with Mr. Smith.
Well, first of all, please, if you get a chance, go to my Facebook page, which is Elect Jim Smith, or my website, www.jimsmith.com. You'll see how, how diverse our campaign is, you'll see how much, how welcoming our campaign is. Again, I very much appreciate the faith that you, the people, the community here in Linwood has been in electing, in putting us through in the primary election. I appreciate the support. In this election, experience does matter. After decades of serving the citizens of Linwood, as a Linwood, as a resident for 47 years, as a small business owner, I have a proven record of accomplishments in our community. I strongly believe that we must be working together, council, staff, and mayor. There's no doubt that I'm able to do that, and I'm willing to do that. I have known the mayor for over 25 years, and I'm confident that we will be, continue working together for the best interests of our Linwood residents. I'll draw upon my experience in common sense leadership to serve the citizens of Linwood. I'll be your voice in Linwood government.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby?
Thank you for being here tonight. I will be proud to bring your voices to the table and to advocate for our neighborhoods, our schools, our streets, and our safety. I'm honored to have earned the endorsement of the state senator John McCoy and Jesse Solomon. A state representative Cindy Ryu, the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish County, our South County Fire Fighters Union, Snohomish County Sheriff Ty Trenary, Snohomish County Executive Day Somers, and many others. Once again, we as a city must, must be prepared for growth. If you look at Lingus for year strategic vision, the plan describes growing the city to meet the future head-on. It anticipates many challenges, but also many opportunities. Preparing for change is my field of expertise as a researcher. I have a long track record of leading successful collaborations between community members and local government. I will be honored if you, the people of Linwood, chose me to serve our city.
Thank you. Dr. Shirley?
In my canvassing over the past several months and talking with the voters, I keep hearing the same things. Taxes, they're going up, okay? What is the money being spent on? Needles in the park. My kids are fighting needles in the park. RVs are just all of a sudden parking on my streets, okay? And what's going to happen when everything grows? And in talking with the folks, what I, what I'm hearing is, is, well, I say, what have you done? And they go, well, I go down to the city and I, I talk with them about the problem with my tree, or there needs to be cut on my sidewalk. Nothing happens. The job, as I see it, of Linwood City Council, or any city council, is to hear the people, represent the people, and get things done like cutting the trees or the sidewalks, and getting results for the people and hearing them. And I will promise you I'll do that. I appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Correa?
So, beyond my experience managing teams and staff, predicting trends and balancing the books, I'm also, gasp, a millennial. While that term is often accompanied with a groan, it's important to recognize that we are well into our 30s, we're working professionals, we're raising families and getting involved in our communities. You may have noticed that I've been saying something different than a lot of the people on stage today, and that's because I recognize that we need representation that's forward-looking. And while I own my business, I'm a renter, like the other half of our renters in Linwood. I have had a personal connection, sorry, a personal contact with the scourge of drug addiction. My wife and I deal with accessibility issues on a daily basis. I have a connection, a relationship with nearly every pressing issue our city is facing. And it's because of this broad and mature perspective that I've been endorsed, not only by our mayor, not only the majority of our sitting city council, but respected elected representatives like Cindy Ryu, Representative Steve Hobbs, and State Senator Jesse Solomon. My name is Nick Coelho. Join me in moving Linwood forward.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Great, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife Pam, hi there Pam, for going through another campaign. It's nothing but fun. I want to assure you that when I'm on the council, that I will still continue to be that voice of fiscal restraint. But at the same time, you know, we need to look at, we talked about homelessness, we want to make sure that the police have the tools and the staff to handle this problem. And then, I'm not sure, in fact, I'm sure, that the solution to housing is not to jam a bunch of people into apartment complexes that surround the transit center. We need to give them options for homeownership. State legislature needs to work again on that condominium legislation because it's still not strong enough. And we just need to be able to, to get that missing middle in here. And I would, I too have been endorsed by former council members, I've been endorsed by the entire county council, and I've been endorsed by state people, and I would just appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessions?
Thank you. I'd like to do a shout-out to my precious mama, Linda Ship, and other loyal supporters who made it tonight. Thank you for coming. We have so many dynamic issues facing Linwood and opportunities in front of us. The work is challenging, vital, and meaningful. I'm grateful for the outpouring of support and endorsements from my peers, other community leaders, police officers, firefighters, and the Affordable Housing Council. We need to be sure that leaders we elect help guide us and are truly qualified to do so, and are able to work as a positive team locally and regionally. In both my public and professional lives, I have been proven to be a positive, decisive, innovative, and hopefully, a gracious leader, who understands the importance of cooperation, sustainability, and fiscal responsibility. I'm in favor of a variety of different housing options, including low-income housing and incentivizing for developers for this and senior housing. As the only veteran on the council currently, I will continue to meet our regional veteran experts and advocate for them. I will not take your vote for granted. Thank you.
Ms. Sutton?
Thank you very much. I seek your support because as we move into a new decade, I, like many of you who wanted me to run and have supported my candidacy, know that we must have the leadership, vision, and commitment to back the economic, educational, and safety needs of Linwood. I am a strong supporter of our first responders that have had to face budget cuts and at times a lack of understanding as to the difficult task it is to provide public safety to such a diverse community. Now that we are able to rebuild the ranks of our first responders, we must make public safety the priority. And one of the priorities that I would like to do, and I'm going to put it out front, is to bring Christmas lighting back to City Hall or Wilcox Park. I have been told that where it is now has, is on private property, and we need to have as many of our residents at these events because we do it for you. So that is one of the things that I would be working on for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that closes out our candidate forum. Thank you so much to all of you for participating. Thank you to the Community Life Center for providing the space, to the Linwood Chamber and Community Transit for supporting this event. And I'm Teresa Whible from Linwood Today. Thanks, and have a good night, everybody.